Good evening. It is six thirty, November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, and we are going to bring our city council workshop to order. If we could, John, can you lead us in our prayer? All righty. Brutal crowd tonight, folks. All right, so before we go into the, there's gonna, it seems like there's gonna be a presentation of some sort, I gathered from this.
It's just a discussion.
Just discussion, okay. So I was gonna say a few things, and then we'll go into our discussion. So, I don't know if anyone's ever heard the two-dollar bill story, but I'm gonna try to tell it. So, there's this lawyer in New York that walks around the streets of New York, and from time to time, he'll pass out two-dollar bills to random people. And it's been said that many times, he can be eating a meal at a restaurant, and people just walk up to him and say, "Thank you, you made my mother's day, you made my day, you changed my life." But as he's sitting there, sometimes his meal gets paid for, or a bottle of wine is given to him. But here's the thing. When we choose to live a life in the service of others, the natural byproduct begins to happen as beautiful things begin to happen. We have chose on this dais to serve others. The roads in Glen Acres are in a situation that need addressing. Could things have been better and done differently in the past? I'm sure they could have been. Could things be done in the future that could keep this from happening? Possibly. But here's the thing. We don't get the luxury of what, of the what should have been done, nor can I weigh in the unknown what could be done, and so on. I can only focus on what is in front of me. And this is the situation. The roads need repair. Not only for safety of those driving on it, but for the people who live in the neighborhood. They need to know, if they call nine-one-one, it can get there to help them quickly. And those responding need to know that they can get there safely as well. Meals on Wheels, schools, post office, and the list goes on. So here's a few names that have changed the world, or even in our own very county we live in. Ronald Reagan, George H.W. Bush, General James Mad Dog Mattis, and even our own Sheriff Terry Garrett. What do these names have in common? Three words: small, consistent actions. The point is, if you want to change something, you don't have to always do something huge. You just have to do small, consistent actions each day. So let's keep working to make the small, consistent actions that are reshaping our city and reshaping how people view our city, staff, and council. We're gonna make decisions from time to time that will not be liked or understood, and others will get the full, and other decisions will get full city support. But leaders are set in place at the right time, in the right spot, for the right reasons. And that isn't by chance. That is by an act of God. God knew long before we sat here as a body of government that we would be here on this very topic, and we would discuss it and work through it and act upon it. Recently, many elected officials were recognized at Lake Point Church roughly a month ago to this day. Pastor Josh shared what I said, just said, as he prayed over all the elected on stage. He spoke on the hate thrown at us, the never-given grace, and more importantly, that we chose to put ourselves out here in the public eye knowing that we're gonna be critiqued for every choice we make. As we open each meeting in prayer, which John led us in tonight, we always ask our Creator for guidance, understanding, and wisdom, and discernment to understand how our actions are gonna shape or reshape how we do things. In Romans, it reminds us that there is no authority except from God. And if we believe that to be true, then we understand that our Creator knew we would be here on this topic tonight. So we need to not only be compassionate, a compassionate body of government, but a responsible one. So for that, I urge and plead that we understand compassion is making sure we set a payment plan that is attainable for this community of Glen Acres, and responsible to see that the city is truly reimbursed. However, that plays out, and what, and that if the ask was a hand-up, then we just do a hand-up. I will support any plan that achieves that goal, meaning anything under a hundred and twenty dollars a month, and a true partnership with the city and community impacted here on this topic. And with that, I'll open the floor for discussion.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. If I may, just a brief introduction here. The purpose of this meeting is to receive, is to discuss financing options associated with the petition to convert private streets to public streets in the Glen Acres subdivision. In front of you, you should have a copy, a physical copy, with some options that staff prepared in collaboration with a few of the council members here present. Please keep in mind, these are proposed options. You are, you are not limited to these options. If, for some reason, you have any other ideas that you'd like to propose beyond what's in front of you, you're more than welcome to. I'm gonna have our finance director, Mr. Jeff, to walk you through the different options that are presented in front of you tonight.
Thank you, Fabrice. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So to start with, it's just the assumptions on page one. So the estimate that we've received is seven-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars roughly. So that's what we've, all of these options that are provided are based on. One thing to note is that it is not uncommon for change orders to occur during a construction process. So while that is the number that we're basing that off of, one of the things to consider is, what do we do if a change order comes in? And how do we handle that situation? The next assumption that's here is interest rate. So all three scenarios that were presented here are a five percent interest rate. Part of your decision on this matter is to determine what the appropriate interest rate is to set. However, we wanted to set them all three at the same, just so you could really see what the different scenarios kinda, to make this as much of an apples-to-apples comparison as possible. Thirdly, third assumption is the loan term. There was a lot of discussion about anywhere from ten years to fifteen years to twenty years, what that right loan term, loan term was. It seemed the most agreed upon was somewhere in the round, in the range of twelve years, which would be potentially towards the end of the useful life of the road as an asphalt road, so that they weren't paying for a road in twenty years that we've already had to tear up and replace and redo again. However, again, that's another thing that you guys get to decide on what the right loan term is. On the next page, you're gonna see the three options that we put together. Basically, one is a fifty-fifty split between the city and residents on the initial amount of seven-thirty-five. One is a twenty-five percent, the city paying twenty-five percent, the residents paying seventy-five percent. One is the city paying ten percent, the residents paying ninety percent. I do have an Excel spreadsheet available if you guys would like to explore some other options with changing interest rates, loan terms, all those things that will quickly give us different options. However, we didn't want to overwhelm you with twenty different options to begin the conversation. Really wanted to see where it went, and then from there, we can see what different scenarios we, we end up with.
Thank you. I'll just do, before we kinda open it up for discussion, I'll just kinda go down the line so everybody can have some input, and then there'll just be probably some back-and-forth discussion, and then we'll end with direction to staff. Chief, do you have anything you have on this? Mr. London?
At this time, I really don't.
Okay. Mr. Towery?
Are we just doing general thoughts at this point, or is this?
It's a workshop, so this is not the normal council agenda. We're just, this is all discussion. It's a workshop. So I'm just going down the line on this one, just to kinda get everybody's initials, and we'll probably have some back-and-forth.
Okay. Just a couple of thoughts that I would, I would want to get into. First off, I would say that I would ask, or, you know, in my, in my thoughts, the time of repayment shouldn't really have anything to do with the life of the road. I know we keep saying like, oh, they should, you know, we don't want them paying longer, but it's no different than buying a car. If I buy a car and three years down the road, it breaks. It has no bearing on how long my note is. We own the road at the point that we fix it. Regardless if it's ten years and we're ripping it up, or fifteen, they have a note to pay. So if the numbers make better sense for the city and for them at a twenty-year, I, or, you know, fifteen, or whatever that number is, I, I would, I would, and when I'm looking at it, they don't, the two don't really correlate. So, and I see that being a, I've seen some people say that in the past, but that's the initial thought. The second thing is, we have to think about, if we don't do anything, and culvert fails, or something happens, what is the financial amount on the city? If that scenario happens, or emergency happens, what would the city have to bear at that point financially? I don't know, I'm asking that. I don't know the answer. But if that number is remotely close to how much we would be out in this scenario, whatever, you know, that's, that's another thing that we need to think about. If we don't do anything, and this road fails, what financially are we gonna have to bear at that point? So anyways, those are my two thoughts for now.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Brewer, do you have anything on this?
Yeah, I guess I just have a little bit different take on the, on the term of the loan. I do think maybe up to fifteen years is fine. I, twenty years is just a bit long for, for that type of road. The other, and just generally speaking, they, they're petitioning under the Section C, which is the exigency part of it. Meaning, they've had some defined issues occur. They've had issues with the school bus not coming, refusing to come down there, issues with emergency vehicles being able to come down there in a timely manner. There was also Meals on Wheels refused to go down there anymore. And there are folks who participate in Meals on Wheels. So with that, it, for, for me, it's, if we did nothing, then there would be an emergency that comes up, and the first question would be asked is, why didn't the city do something? And then we're having to do something which may be more expensive, and it could be costly in terms of a person. So that's my thought.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dean?
Yeah, just two things, so I understand. Workshop, there's no decisions being made tonight. Correct? Okay. And we're just evaluating options, discussing them amongst ourselves. Where's the money coming from? General fund, a bank?
Fund reserve.
Fund reserve. Okay. And that's where, and that's who gets paid back, is that fund reserve? Okay. That's all I have.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Goodwin?
This is, this has been something that's been going on for a long time. It, it's time to get this fixed. There's, there's no question. I don't think anybody will debate the need, and it is a need to get this done. I, I think the hard part has been, how much does the city help? And what does the city give? And I've been crunching numbers on this. I've been speaking with people. And the question I've been asking is, how much does the city help our neighbors? And in conversations with some of you, you guys didn't, the help you wanted was more the city's resources, not necessarily a handout. And I'm gonna tell you, I don't think, I don't see how we don't get this done in helping you guys, and actually, and getting the, the city made whole at the end of it. I, I think the numbers are brined throughout. I think we're gonna be able to hit that. I, I don't see any reason why we can't help and not, as some people say, give away the city's money. I, I, I think there's a way to get this done, and I'm, I'm doing numbers and checking them, and it's there.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Powers?
Sorry about that. To start with, I just wanted to share with you guys and the audience here what my priorities are. That's all right, buddy. My priorities are, as, as a city councilman and a neighbor, is that we have an ordinance that exists now, and we have a duly submitted petition for that ordinance. And so now, it's, it's our obligation to, to deal with that. And the manner in which I approach that is that I wanna live up to the spirit of the ordinance in assisting Glen Acres residents. I've, I've agreed with everything that's been said here so far. It, it benefits more than you, just you guys. It benefits the entire city. And I think that we ought to act in accordance with the ordinance. We ought to ensure that every action that we take is legal and in the best interest of the city. That's why we have a city manager. That's why we have a, a city attorney, just to make sure that every little detail is done properly, that it's financially responsible, which has been talked about here already, and it's otherwise in the best interest and fair to all involved parties. That's my attitude toward it. I'll get to these other items here that I have some concerns about that I just need questions answered. But on my numbers, if you look at the numbers I round down there, coincidentally, it's a twenty-five-seventy-five split, and I used the actual figure of seven-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars and thirty-two dollars and sixty-four cents. So my figures are a little bit different here, because I didn't round them, okay? But basically, if we look at the differences in, in mine, is that I think we should be offering a lower rate. I, I wanna see it down into three percent rate, personally. I'm okay if it's five. If it's five, it's five. But I'd like to see it a little bit lower. And what I have here is that if we, if we do a twenty-five-seventy-five split, if we financed it for fifteen years, it would be a hundred and five dollars a month per resident, per house. If we did it for ten years at three percent, it'd be a hundred and forty-seven dollars a month. And that's, so I'm kinda right here in the middle on, on what these are. I'm open to hearing anything, though, any ideas at all. But I think we can, we can meet some of these objectives. I don't know that we need to charge five percent. We could charge a lower rate and accomplish some of the same goals. But the benefit that we're gonna walk away with is the city's gonna front the cost to doing, to constructing the road in the culvert, and then ultimately, it's gonna cover twenty-five percent of that cost. The city provides a low three percent fixed rate to the homeowners over a ten- or fifteen-year term, depending on what, what can be afforded. And the residents get a new road and a new culvert, and it's gonna eliminate all the associated problems that we're talking about that affect more than just them, affects the whole city. And then the city, of course, will take over the roads, the maintenance of the roads and repairs in perpetuity. So that's my suggestion that I offer here, is what, is how we should structure this.
I like that. One thing I, I meant to add earlier, and that we will have to make sure is put in these numbers. The previous council did approve a five-thousand-dollar road study. And per that vote that night, it was clear that that money, no matter when this finally came to the table, that five thousand had to be back in there. So I wanna make sure that's in there, not because to, it's just following what we all agreed at, at that time with that five thousand, and it's just keeping us honest. The previous council had that wish, and we have to honor that. Or should honor that, rather. So that will change some of the numbers. But, John, I liked what you said, sir. Liked it a lot. So, again, this is just discussion. The whole goal to Mr. Dean's point is, at the end of this, we're just gonna give direction to staff. I'd like to turn it back over to Councilmember Goodwin, if that's okay with everybody. Wanna hear some of his dive-in of the numbers, what he's seeing up there? Jeff, have you already made it three percent yet?
Yep.
Yeah, I added the five thousand, made it three percent in fifteen years. And you can see at the bottom, where it has resident costs seventy-five percent, that would be the line for what Councilmember Powers proposed. So that would pay the city back, assuming everyone paid on time over the full fifteen years. The city would get back a hundred and thirty-four thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars in interest. And you can see above where it talks about the split, the second little kinda section towards the top, the split of fifty-fifty, seventy-five-twenty-five, and ninety-ten. So at seventy-five-twenty-five, the city would take on roughly a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars of the initial cost. And then in this scenario, we would get about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of that back. So just to, so you can kinda see where the, the making whole, as Councilmember Goodwin talks about, kinda where that leaves us.
Okay.
Can I just add one more thing?
Absolutely.
Uh, just to kinda flesh out my whole deal here. I don't know what the financial status is of everybody who lives in the community, but I think as part of this, just, I'm just throwing this out there, offering a six months, same as cash, for anybody who wanted to pay cash to just eliminate their, their, their share. They could have six months in which to do that and have no interest charged. That's a thought. I don't know if that's agreeable, but it's a thought.
Could change things, but I, I think, so Fabrice and I had a conversation today with Mr. Holla, and what we would like to do is just keep it exactly blank. That way, we don't run to, this person would have agreed to this contract, this person, or, and, let me take that back. There are no contracts, just, but one person might say, "Well, I would have rather done it this way than another one this way." So to eliminate anything, whatever we agree upon, my hope is to try to say, it's the same for everybody. I, I like the incentive, because that gets us the money quicker. But if they can make it work, I'm, I'm for it, because I'm that kinda person who pays the debts.
You would, you would want it to be where anybody can pay it off anytime they want.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, for sure, for sure.
I was just putting that little window in front.
Six months, no question.
No interest.
And I think you could look at this in a similar fashion to Sonoma Verde homeowners with their Pid. You can pay it off early at any point, and it's just like, or, or an auto loan, or, or a home loan. The faster you pay it off, the less interest you pay. So that option's always gonna be there. Anybody that pays it in full, you know, there would be, if we treat this like a normal loan, you know, if you pay it within thirty days, there's no interest tacked on there. So it's, I think the idea is, it's, it's gonna be similar to the way people are used to paying off long-term loans.
Right. Well, and, and a lot of that, it's just, like, when you buy a car, you can pay it off at any time, and all they do is just calculate what's the remaining principal, and you, there's no more accrued interest.
Correct. There would be an amortization schedule, and it would be based on that, that schedule. If you pay it off early, that, that adjusts your amortization schedule and so forth.
Right. So, so whether it's the, you know, I like the idea of the first six months, you know, same as cash type of thing, whatever, as long as we're maintaining that perspective for people that maybe there's a windfall, maybe unfortunately, they, you know, somebody passes away, they get some money or something, or whatever the case may be, and they can just go, here, let's just erase this part of our, our debt from our books. And so I just wanna make sure we keep that as an option.
Mr. Goodwin?
The concern I have is the future cost of the money. If we were to invest this money, what would we get? And personally, I'm okay with setting that aside and saying that's us being a good neighbor. But what I don't want to happen, and when I say the city being restored to full or to whole, is the future purchasing power of that dollar. And I, being reasonable, I think two-and-a-half percent inflation rate is fair. The other, the other side we have is we do have an administrative cost. We're, we're gonna be doing the billing. So I think that's where kinda the three percent came out, was that's, that's our inflation. So to me, it's not just paying back, it's, it's paying back at the future value. If people pay it off early, great. We don't have to worry about inflation on it, and we don't have to worry about administrative. When, when we start getting into splits, it gets a little more complicated, because you have to have a little more interest to restore to whole. So can I throw out a scenario? So to kinda get us to whole in future value, in what I've just presented, let's go five percent interest, twenty, twenty years. And that should, what does that put us out on the ninety? One-twenty-one. So at the ninety percent, that would restore us to whole at the end, future value of money. So we would not be losing to inflation. Our, the city's purchasing power would stay the same. And that puts us about one-twenty-one on a twenty-year at the ninety percent. This, to me, is the best scenario. It pays the city back full, restores the city to whole, and they get everything taken care of. And I'm under the impression that this is close to the budget that, no? One-twenty-one a month?
Can I submit this to Fabrice? This is a list of residents in their current condition, or, just look at elderly, fixed income. I don't have any copies for everybody.
Angela, can you just make some copies real quick for everybody? Angela, if you wanna give him a microphone? Please. Sorry.
Anyway, there's thirty-six residents.
Anyway, there's thirty-six residences there. One refuses to even acknowledge there's an HOA that he's part of and doesn't pay. Although he previously had access to one of our roads, he just built fence there, and as soon as the road's done, he'll put another, another culvert in there, and he'll have access on our road again. But besides that, we've got a number that are elderly widows, fixed income retirees, police officers, retired police officers, former Marines, veterans, I'm a veteran, several are. And some of these people can't afford a hundred and twenty dollars a month. And my job as the guy in charge of the HOA right now is to see if I can get it where everyone can afford it and will vote on this, because if I can't, can't get them to vote yes on the financing terms, we're stuck.
Tom, what is the number you guys feel is that number? And you got to remember, there's, there's going to be some back and forth on this, if you say, I can tell you, which, the number you're thinking.
I put some numbers together as well, based on the five percent interest, twenty years, with the city financing thirty-seven percent, and the residents financing sixty-three percent, that would keep it around ninety dollars a month, after all the fees and everything, and the city would make all their money back.
So, I just want to understand, so your number is ninety, however it got there, ninety would be your number?
That's, that's what I think we can get the votes for.
Okay. So is there a way you can plug in a scenario, Jeff, to give me, just give them a second, I just want to see what this comes out at. Don might be able to do it as well.
You said?
Thirty-seven percent for the city, sixty-three percent for the residents.
I just want to point to the.
And I'm, I'm also assuming that we're going to add the signage, because that's two thousand dollars that's not included in that, because we're required to pay for all the signage. Thank you.
Mr. Milner, based on the conversation you and I had, I, I believe that it is my understanding that you elected to have that taken care of separately. Am I, did I understand you wrong, or?
Well, I thought it was going to be rolled into the loan, but if it's not, we can take care of it separately.
I, I know, I know the cost, supply cost is about approximately two thousand dollars.
Right.
I'm, I'm not sure as of yet what the cost of that installation would be.
Can, can I ask you, are, are most of these people homeowners? They own their home?
All these people are homeowners.
So are they aware that they will be leaned?
Yes.
So I, not to, not to be callous, but the city will get paid back at some point.
Right.
Whether they pay it back monthly, or we get it when their home is transferred, right, upon death, if it's transferred to, or if it's sold, the city will be a lien holder, and we will get paid?
Right.
The argument is we have to get an act of consent.
Yes.
To fulfill the next steps.
So out of thirty-six residences, we have to have thirty-three that vote in favor of whatever terms we iron out. And there's more than three fixed income widows on the list.
And I'm very empathetic to that. I, I've, I've thought a lot about this. This is, part of, part of the lean piece is maybe, maybe there is an option to do a lower payment with a balloon on the end. Either way, if we're getting the interest, that's covering the, the dollar cost of the money. If, if they choose to sit on it, we'll get it at the, you know, when, when the property is sold. So I, I don't, I'm open to having more of those discussions. I want to make this work, and there's no reason that it can't. I, I think, I, my perception from a conversation with you guys, you guys just wanted help with the resources and financing, not that you guys wanted money from the city.
We don't want anything given to us.
Yeah.
We want to partner with the city to get this road safe for everybody in our subdivision, and any emergency services, deliveries, whatever it takes to get it safe.
I think our only discussion is just how to pay it back. I think, I think we're in a ballpark, and a few, I don't, I don't want to let a few destroy it, because I think we're in a ballpark here, and we're probably closer than we've ever been.
Oh, absolutely. I agree completely. I think we're a lot closer than I ever thought we would get, but I have to take into consideration, I've already spoken to all these people that probably can't pay ninety or a hundred bucks a month, and we've decided among HOA that whatever we have left out of the funds, we will help them. But how long, how long can we help?
Tom, let me ask you this, you're at ninety, we're sitting at one-twenty-one on the last example, I believe, that I saw. I mean, so I always say this, anytime I'm in my meetings and I'm dealing with other people, I always say, wins, a, a contract is only good if both people get a win, a negotiation is good if only, if both people get a win. So obviously, the city doesn't want to be, you know, high-fiving as y'all walk out the door, and we don't want to see y'all high-fiving either, we want to make sure it's a good handshake and everyone's happy. So I can tell you, we're all definitely on that page, and I think everyone's echoed that sentiment.
I, I agree, from what I've heard tonight.
If ninety is where you're at, and we're at one-twenty-one, I mean, we're going to have to probably find a way to be in the one-oh, one-hundred to one-oh-five range, if I'm being honest. I, I, I don't, in doing the numbers real quick here, I don't know if ninety gets us there. And I'm just, and, and it's just like, as Don is saying, it's, it's, we're just being honest, and, and I think we're at a point where honesty is going to be more respected than, than stringing things along right now. I don't think ninety gets us there unless someone else sees something I don't see, but the, the way the ordinance reads that Jerry wrote up, it's twenty years max, so that's our max, so we can't add time.
Right.
We could, Jeff, can you put that at four percent, just so I can see?
Yeah.
That's what we're tweaking.
Twenty years is an awful long time. If we can avoid twenty years, it'd be one.
Go, go, how about doing this? Go, go eighteen years for me, sir? And?
You're going to be eighteen and three.
Say that again, chief?
If it's ninety, you're going to be eighteen and three.
Do, do me, do me three, seven, five, and then three and a half, just so I can see. Three, seven, five comes to ninety-eight, so that doesn't do anything, and then three and a half, so I'm going to make it to ninety-six, probably. Yeah, ninety-six.
That's pretty close. I wouldn't be embarrassed, I wouldn't be embarrassed to submit that to all the homeowners and get them to vote for it, but.
That's what we're here to not, to try to figure something out. Eric, what do you have, sir? Make sure you're on your mic.
So at the seventy-five percent that we have now, the, the interest is one-ninety-three, where, where's our, man, I need better glasses. What's our, what's our cost at the seventy-five, twenty-five?
So the cost for the city, on the front-end cost of it, would be about a hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred dollars.
Okay, so.
So that would get us all of that paid back, the only thing that would be missed.
Okay, so look at the sixty-three percent, sorry, the sixty-three.
Sixty-three percent.
Hold on, at the si, so at the sixty-three percent, we're at a loss of, what is that?
A little, little over a hundred, about a hundred and ten thousand?
Yeah, so maybe that, so we can find somewhere in there, but again, I, I just want to ask this question, and if you can help me, chief, if, what, what's the scenario look like if, let's, okay, because I want to go back to the whole, like, if we did nothing scenario, and the, and the road fails, what is the city's responsibility at that point? Do we have to restore?
It would take us three to five years for us to get to this point, but if we cannot come to an agreement here, where basically we're financing operations for them, at a loss for us. Basically, the next step is, county state would come in and tell us that we have to repair?
And it would want to be in a cost share between?
Basically, the way this looks.
You're fine. I, I, so, no, no, so I, I guess where I'm, where I'm getting at is, I'm okay, like, I know we're trying to create, to try to become whole, but if, if there's a little bit of loss on the city's part, like, but, but we can, if we can get that number, we were talking, if we're talking, you know, forty or fifty, I, I'm just saying that, that, I know we want to get whole, but again, if we're real close, I mean, you know, I think.
I can, I can, I can respond to that, may I? On the floor? That's kind of why, I was doing the, that's why I looked at the seventy-five, twenty-five configuration, even under that scenario where we're, we're putting out eighty, a hundred and eighty-four thousand, we're going to recover some of that because of the interest that we're going to get on, on, on the seventy-five percent. So I think my figures was, we would, I didn't, I actually didn't put this in here, but we're going to recover better than half of that money, assuming everybody paid over that link at the time. And that's why I lowered, I lowered the interest rate in order to get the payment lower. That was my purpose in lowering the interest rate. I think we have to have an interest rate, we have to charge interest, but we, we, we'll still take a loss. We will still take a loss in the long run, in today's dollars. It'll be a bigger loss down the road. That's why I'm opposed to the, to twenty years, for that reason, it's too, I'm going to be eighty-two in twenty years, probably won't even be here, be alive, you know?
Can I ask a question? How many homeowners are we talking about that can't afford this?
Enough, enough that we won't get ninety percent. We're looking at.
No, no, like a number.
Hey, Don, while he's looking at that, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Over the course of the term of the loan?
Yeah.
What are we looking at? So we have to charge interest, right?
Yeah.
Otherwise, each year that goes by with inflation, it costs us more and more to finance this loan.
Yeah.
For every year we extend this out, we need to increase our interest rate, so by the end of it, it's, we're not just pouring money out the door to make this thing work. If we looked at this year, inflation was basically two-point-five.
Yeah.
If we can expect that, but if we can expect that year over year for the term of this agreement, you're talking about ten years times two-point-five percent for us to break even. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I answer your question?
Yeah.
Three, voting exit, because I just.
And you, and you believe that, you believe they have a need?
Oh, and yeah, one of them recently, her husband passed away, and she's now, she's fully retired, which is terrible.
We, this being recorded, we have.
Yep. So one of our neighbors recently had her husband pass away, she's been retired for about ten years. She just went back to work at a grocery store to make ends meet, full-time, after retirement. We have people who literally have oxygen tanks being taken to their houses.
No, I get you. So, so I, I guess just, people that, that are, if, if we set it at one-twenty-one, or one-twenty, how many would not be able to afford it that are on a fixed three? And we can prove that that income is low?
Undoubtedly.
They're willing to disclose their financials?
I didn't ask him that.
This is.
Didn't ask that.
That's not our, that's not my business.
If they're willing to prove that they are low-income, I would personally be okay with that as a city of helping those three individuals. Of figuring that out.
They can pay, they can pay ninety, but not one-twenty? Or they're in trouble to pay the ninety? Honestly, I think someone would be stretched to pay the ninety.
I, I think looking out for the most vulnerable in our community is important, and these people, we have to prove this, we have to, we have to do our due diligence, but I think taking care of the vulnerable in the community is important. The Meals on Wheels thing has really sat on me on this, and these are probably the same people that need that. I would hate to destruct this deal over three people that quite honestly need our help the most. So that's just, I don't want, I've, I've got some ideas, but I, I don't, in, in the private world, I would do something different than, than the government world. But, you know, what is the community, I, I have these breakfasts on Wednesdays, and I ask people, what, what do you guys think about this? And they do want to help, but they also don't want the city to take on this huge price tag. And I kind of, we've got to figure something out for these three people, because I think everybody else is good to go. And, and this is a question back to you guys of, can you guys help those people, and maybe we all come to the table and figure this out? I, I feel like we're so close here, we're talking about thirty dollars a month.
Absolutely.
For three, for three people. It's ninety dollars.
What does that total come out to, if I'm just?
I, I don't know what it is, and I don't know how we legally do that from the DIES, but that's where my heart is.
At, if it's thirty dollars difference, thirty times, that's ninety, right? So that's?
Then it's just a matter of how long we're talking.
A thousand something a year between the three of them? Am I right? Because if it's ninety times.
Roughly, yeah.
And quite frankly, there should be a consideration, because all of these people are elderly. There's a time when that house is going to change, and it's not going to need the assistance.
This is going to sound harsh, and I don't mean it to be, but it's going to be. I, we are not, I cannot take your emotionals in on this one. This is a decision that is based purely business, and I know that's hard to hear, because I do bleed for these people, I do, if there's anyone up here, I'm telling you, I feel for them. Actually, I think we all do, but I have to maintain that we're representing the city, and I'm, I'm, so I'm going to try to, I'm personally going to stay away from the emotional side, because we've got to find a deal that works.
I don't think I was going emotional. I think where I was going was this.
Well, I don't mean emotional, I mean their stories.
These three people, these three people are el, very elderly.
Yeah.
Their lifespan, and I don't want to put it on the record, is, is, is.
We know.
Reality, right?
Right, you're saying what we know.
At some point, that house is going to someone else.
Right.
They won't need the same assistance, over thirty dollars a month.
Right. And that's, that's the, to Don's point earlier, is that the city will get its money, right? So if, if that house, if that person passed away and they sold their house, that, that's going to come through estate, lien, however that works out, or pass on to the next homeowner, and then that person's going to pay it. So it, it does come full, I'm just trying to keep us on the, the track of how we stay to the agreement. Donna, or Tom, you're saying ninety, we're sitting at one-twenty, the last number I think I saw up there now is at a, to go back to John Powers, he said seventy-five, twenty-five, and, and, and even Eric Towery mentioned that it's, so I think I want to back up here, I don't see anything as a loss. So when we say loss, I just don't see it that way, and I, and the reason I say that is, is because Glen Acres, they pay taxes as well, and, and I've seen roads get fixed in other areas that the city owns, that I'm, I'm, I'm pretty certain they don't use. So I don't, I mean, but that's going, you know, the tit-for-tat route, which I, I just hate doing that, but I just want to point out, sometimes there are wins and losses and things, to Mr. Towery's point.
Mr. Mayor? I was just going to say that in my background, and I've said this to Fabrice before, and I think maybe to some other council people, if we get back, if the city, if the city is spending in the end twenty-five, thirty percent of the money, that's their final outlay for one-hundred percent of the road to be fixed, that's a deal. I'm just saying, that's a deal. If you're, if the city's spending a hundred thousand dollars for a seven-hundred thousand dollar road, that's a deal, if they're net return.
Can I get, just ask a question for clarification, Mr. Mayor? You said a minute, my understanding of this is when, if we have a lien on the house, house sells, we're going to collect the full amount at that time, that won't be passed on, this is my understanding, that will not be passed on to, if they transfer it to relatives, or if they sell the home, we collect the whole amount. Now I'm asking, is that everybody's understanding?
Correct. That's, yeah.
That is correct. The lien is tied to.
And that's what you, you agree to that as well?
That's, that's my understanding as well.
Thank you.
Hey, Jeff, can we crack some numbers here real quick and try to, let's, let's see if we can make this work? Can we do a five percent at fif, at, at fifteen, and change that ninety percent to eighty on the resident cost? At the bottom left, yeah, ninety percent to an eighty.
I'm going to add a new line, so that we don't have to.
Oh, got you, okay.
Changing it.
And Don, feel free to jump in, show, throw in some number, I'm just, okay, so we're, okay, that's one-twenty-nine. So can we?
So the loan amount is, just so you guys are aware, I didn't say this, and maybe you've already figured it out, but just to make sure everybody's on the same page, that is the total loan amount that each residence would be responsible for. So if they were to pay it in full, that would be their pay in full amount, if they wanted to pay it the day after this gets finalized.
Eighty percent is one-twenty-nine, so what about thirty percent?
Well, I, I, I'm looking at this, and one of the things that I see is, we, we have three major areas that we're looking at, right? We're looking at A, the split, B, the interest, and C, the term.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right? So we can, we can work something out with those to get as close as possible for those re, and, and it may, it may be different on the split. That may be where that number comes more into play. I mean, I'm just, I'm, I'm not an accountant, you know, but-
Yeah. So what about, what about the interest rate at three percent, and then what would that put at, what did you say, seventy? A seventy, seventy percent resident cost? So are we going to keep adding columns here?
Keep adding columns.
I was trying to simplify it and not have too many rows for you.
Okay, so one-twenty-five. Good job. Can you take the hundred off this one, turn it over?
Mayor, do you mind? So you see what they're looking at, right? What is a reasonable term interest, everything, from your standpoint? Or are you just stuck on what that monthly payment is?
Personally, I don't want to pay any more than fifteen years, but I understand that the, uh, interest rate probably needs to be a little higher than three percent. But that at the same time is going to drive up the payment, which some people are going to struggle with. So if we kept it at, I'll say, three and a half, three-point-seven-five at fifteen years, then we, uh, adjust the split between the city and the residents to try to keep it under a hundred bucks a month. That's what I'm asking. And I'm just, this is me voicing this on behalf of the residents, because when we initially went around for the initial petition, the estimated cost of the road was nowhere near this much. And based on that, they're not expecting over a hundred dollars a month. Now, that, that was probably premature, but we had a valid estimate for much less than this, and that's what we were going on. Probably shouldn't have done that, but it's too late to take that back. I just want to work with you so that we keep it as low as we can for the residents.
Can we do one more?
However many you want.
It's a, a sixty-forty split, five percent interest, fifteen years.
You said five percent, fifteen years?
Yeah.
Honestly, I think I can push that through. I really do.
So if, if we're looking for the nineties, then I, I would be, so, if we're looking for a ninety dollar, then I'm in, I'm more in favor, so the fifteen-year, seventy-five, twenty-five split at three percent leaves the, the city at a negative fifty K, okay? Now, when I figure in real world, you know, like if we were, you know, we had talked about possibly, you know, if we have to grab whatever it is, anything that we could do to help, or we would have to do to help in the future is going to be more than fifty. I am, I am personally okay if that, if with a fifty thousand dollar, you know, deficit or something, but we could, we can help, you know, and we can take over a road and we can help the situation, um, and that puts us at a, I can't remember, it was like a ninety something, again, I'm just speaking for myself.
Which one are you looking at?
It was a three percent, set the seventy-five, twenty-five split.
That's where I, that's where I suggested.
Yeah.
Right? And that, that's at one-oh-six-eighteen, based on the additional five thousand dollars from previous.
We would, we would, we would be losing about fifty. Is that right?
Correct. Yeah, right at fifty thousand.
Yeah.
Keep in mind, that's-
It's one of six.
That's dollar for dollar, that's not giving us anything back in future purchasing power. And I, I, I have a question for you guys. So I think I might be a bit high on my administrative costs, I don't, I don't know. I don't know what your guys' costs are. Uh, the rate that I had was about thirty-seven thousand dollars a year in administrative costs. I think that might be a little high, just at first pass. Uh, with the ERP, is this going to be easier to administer? I know we have that software coming on.
So the, the ERP, we did not, we have basically an accounts receivable module, but everything has to be manually done within it. So we did not spend, because we don't have something like utility billing where the, the rates theoretically fluctuate, we saved a little cost on not getting a module that the city really doesn't need yet at this point. So everything will have to be manually entered in and calculated, unfortunately.
So if, if we went down to like eighteen thousand, instead of thirty-five thousand, eighteen and a half, or seventeen and a half on thirty-five, I, I mean, I, I don't know what that looks like in, in ours and your guys' time to do the billing. I, I just want to make sure that we're having a, a real conversation about what the costs are to the city.
Right. Uh, if I may, um, earlier when Mayor and I had, excuse my voice, had the discussion with, uh, the, the city attorney about this, I specifically a, asked him about including an admin cost, and he advised against that. Uh, he specifically said that it has to be reimbursable cost, it cannot be anything addition, in addition to that.
Okay. Well, I guess that's off the table? That, that, that makes that simple then? Cool, then we can take that off that calculation?
Ultimately, if y'all want to get to, I'm sorry, Councilman Powers, if y'all want to get to a certain payment, we can put together some options. Obviously, we're not voting on anything specifically tonight. We can put together some different options to get you to that payment, to review at the next council meeting. Um, just a thought, because I think we go back and forth with this for, for hours, really, looking at all these different scenarios and, but if ultimately the goal is to get them to a certain payment, um, that's something that could be easily done and prepared for the next council meeting.
So my, my goal is to not, to give staff direction, um, because on December ninth, I, I, we're, we're voting, there, we're, this is going to be discussed enough between now and then. I don't want to, I don't want to push this to January. I think if we can, I like what you're trying to say there, or maybe I might be misunderstanding, so please correct me if I'm wrong, but if we come up with some scenarios, since we still have time till December ninth, that's great, we can present it to them, but my goal tonight is to get that answer to them tonight, because it's, it's paramount to me at this point to, I mean, if we're here till nine o'clock, then, you know, at least we'll get the second half of the game. But I, I just want to make sure that we come up with the, the direction for staff that's clear, and direction for the community that's clear, because December ninth, I, I, I think we've talked about all this enough, it's just time to take action. Mr. Powers?
Um, please, please take this in the spirit that I intended. If it sounds harsh, I do not mean it to sound harsh. I just mean it, I mean it to be plain spoken. Um, uh, this, this is a significant investment that, that we're making here out of, out of the, uh, city reserves, and that could be used for other things. I am, I am supportive of it for all the reasons I gave, and it is, it is a, I would characterize it as a painful thing that we're, that we're doing, based on the percentage of our, of our budget, of our reserves that we're using. So, uh, from your side, i- if we're, we're, I feel like we're really extending ourselves, and maybe you just need to absorb a little, little more pain on your side. I know that maybe doesn't sound pleasant, but to, to take a bigger bite of the, of the, of the sandwich here. And, uh, you've already mentioned that you, you're willing to help those who, who are struggling, but I know you guys are sick of that road, and we sure don't want our fire engine and everything going down that street and collapsing in that culvert, and people taking, you know, ten minutes each way to get in and out of there. I'm with you, and I've, I've come a long way personally, but I, I feel like the, the figure that the, the, that the mayor mentioned at the beginning, um, and the numbers that were coming up that are kind of around that hundred-dollar, hundred-and-five-dollar figure, I think that's super fair.
I agree. I agree. That's, that's, that's a deal for us. It really is. It's a deal. The seventy-five, uh, at three percent for fifteen years for a hundred-six dollars per residence, we can find a ma, a way to make that. Now-
So it's, it's the seventy-five at three percent?
Seventy-five, twenty-five, three percent for fifteen, I think we can make it fly. We'll find a way to make it fly.
It's highlighted up on the screen right there. Yes, sir. And that's the one that Councilmember Towery was mentioning, that we would recoup all but fifty thousand, assuming all the interest.
Yeah, just because I'm terrible with numbers, but what, what, what changes number-wise every year of payments that you add to this note? Like, let's say you change that to sixteen-year, what does that interest point look like per year?
Shaved off about six dollars per month.
And-
But another thing to consider, just throwing it out there, the longer that term is, the more interest they're paying on it as well. So it's actually costing them more money in the long run for those of, those that see this out the full term, just-
Right, right. Right, but it's that, it's that give and take, right? It, that like, it-
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Can I make a quick comment? I'm looking at this from, with my appraiser hat on, I'm a commercial appraiser, not residential, but, uh, as far as the annexation of the rest of us in the back, myself included, that's going to be a, a little bit of an increased revenue to the city. And I would, I, I would pretty reasonably project that the county is going to up the assessments with this road on everybody. And if you're looking at, let's say, ten thousand for thirty-six homes, um, and the tax rate, let's say it, whatever the city rate is, eight and a half, nine, whatever it is, so you're about thirty thousand a year more. If they bumped it twenty-five thousand, you're up to another ninety thousand in, in revenue the city is going to bring in for, and, and I throw those numbers out, one of our houses sold, uh, the Johnson House, Tate House. I didn't see the appraisal, but I heard the appraiser docked them thirty to fifty thousand, it was thirty thousand or fifty thousand because of the road. And so they had to, uh, yeah. So, so the county's going to look at this, I would, I would think, because you're going to be able to sell for a higher amount because of the nice road, but I think the county would look at it similarly, if I had to project. Now, how much that's going to be, who knows? Can't predict what the county's going to-
Uh, Dennis, did you have something that I want to hear Don weigh in on what, uh, Kevin just said?
Sure. Yeah, so I was curious, how, how strong is everyone against a twenty-year?
I think we don't.
Or we don't want to? Because I, I know, I know if we do a twenty-year based on, um, you know, the three percent on a, what was it, I think it was a sixty-forty, I think we're down in those numbers where they're looking at.
Yeah. Yeah, the thought, the, the thought with the, uh, with the twenty-year, I know everybody's kind of against it, but I mean, the reality is, is that, I mean, very few people stay in their house for twenty years. You're going to, you're going to pay a little bit of money until you decide to sell the house or whatever happens. I mean, there's going to be few people on that road that, that go to twenty years. I, I mean, so that's why I, I don't, I don't see the issue with the twenty-year. I, I, I know, I know in, it's like, I don't want to pay on to this, I'm just saying, I don't think it should be straight off the table, um, in that sense, uh, if, if, if it makes more sense, um, but, you know, again.
Right, and that's, that's why I was, I was wondering, because, I mean, if, if the twenty's off the table, okay, great, then we're down at fifteen, but then we got to play with whatever the percent is.
Let me hear what Don has to say on twenty, because, um, Don and Jeff, to me, are the numbers guys here, so if they, if they can see twenty making it work for the city, then I want to hear what they say. Don?
Twenty years just creates more payment flexibility. It gets you to where you guys want to be. You guys all have the option and probably the means to pay it off next week. It's eighteen thousand dollars at the worst case. Um, I, I'm going to be kind of blunt. I, I don't know what those people and there's the ages of those people, but this does not transfer, when their homes are transferred, the city will be paid back.
Correct.
I don't know if that's going to be twenty years. I would be surprised if everybody, I mean, heck, at a three percent loan, I mean, I would take it out twenty years personally. It's a great loan.
So let me ask you this, Don, with, with saying that, so are you figuring that on the seventy-five percent or the ninety percent?
I, I've done all my calculations on the city being made whole. Um, I, I'm willing to adjust it a little bit. In fact, can we do two-point-seven-five if we're taking out, or two-point-five if we're taking out the admin fee?
So he's, he's, so we're, we're moving out the admin fee at two-point-five.
Now, look at that ninety, brings us down to ninety-seven.
So if we did two-point-five at twenty years, at ninety percent, the loan amount is eighteen four fifty, eighteen four fifty, eighty-two per home, ninety-seven, seventy-seven?
Yes, sir.
And I believe a minute ago, um-
The city is made whole.
Tom said that he was good with ninety-seven, but then you're making, now we're making it whole.
The city is whole there. Or, the city is whole on the borrowing, we're losing ten percent. We're losing seventy-three thousand, we are whole on the borrowing, at, at inflation rate.
Whole on the borrowing and inflation, it still took a small loss, but-
Seventy-three thousand, which about thirty thousand would come back in the gain property taxes over the twenty years of the new homes, so we're down forty-three.
Over, over a twenty-year span?
Over a twenty-year span. I-
That's a ninety.
Two, ninety. Ninety.
A couple things on the property tax. Anybody over sixty-five is frozen, and we keep hearing how many residents are over sixty-five, so their tax rate will not increase, or their, as their value increases.
I figured that.
We've, we've brought three new homes in the system, they are going to be paying some tax.
So I, uh, just rough, I, I have not run the numbers, so don't quote me on this, but thirty thousand sounds incredibly high.
Over twenty years.
We're doing it over the whole term.
It's like eight hundred, it's, it's like-
Okay, I got you.
Yeah, we, we were doing it-
I was thinking per year.
Term and total wise of the, the totality.
I'm looking at the ninety.
I mean, I was, I was working on trying to keep that monthly rate lower and more palatable, but-
I'm in line, I'm in line with the seventy-five or eighty percent is where I'm trying to be at. So if we're at seventy, so it goes back to Mr. Powers in the beginning at the seventy-five, twenty-five. And, and I understand the, I understand the necessity of, of being made whole, but, man, I-
What would be, I think, at the worst?
Yeah, so to the point what Chief brought up earlier, there's, there's an opportunity if we do nothing, it gets, it gets more expensive, it gets worse, and it could end up being where we don't have, we, there is no agreements being made in the cities on whole, whole amount anyway. So the whole point of the ordinance being written by Mayor Pro Tim Brewer was to allow a opportunity to have these discussions where we could have just sat back and done nothing, and then in a few years, the city's covered it all. Um, so I, I, I'm good in the seventy-five, eighty range. Um, I mean, I know this is all going to come to a vote on twelve-nine, we're just trying to give direction. Uh, for me, my options would be seventy-five, eighty, and ninety. Uh, if we could just maybe focus on those three options and-
Jeff?
Sorry, I didn't, Mike, Mike wasn't on, so, so-
Chief, hey, Chief.
Chief, Mayor.
I meant Mr. Mayor. Uh, I think, uh, Councilman Goodwin is looking at the, is more focused on getting their payment down. Uh, if you look at the ninety percent range that just came off, um, do you still have that on the bottom, the ninety percent? Um, at, whether it's two and a half percent interest or three percent, it's not, it's not a big difference in the payment. You see the ninety percent there? Uh, they're taking a bigger bite, but they have twenty years to pay it off at a very low interest rate. It's cheap money, and it gets their payment below a hundred, which is, their primary goal seems to be the lower payment, right? Uh, but you still also don't want to, you don't want to- Uh, but you still also don't want to, you don't want a bigger principal. You'd still like to be a, a lower principal as well.
As a whole, we're, we have to speak on behalf of everybody in our community because I think all three of us would say, let's just pay it outright and move on for the three of us, right? But we can't speak for everyone like that. Um, my question is, if you were to do the ninety percent, we all might get made whole, is that eighteen thousand, four hundred and fifty what you pay off even if you pay off right at the beginning?
That's your principle, yeah.
Yes.
Which, which is why I'm kind of being the seventy-five and then eighty range.
Sorry, the seventy-five and eighty range, just, to me, the seventy-five just sounds and looks better. But also the city just standing up and kind of, one thing I always say is, to me up here, it's not about being right, it's about doing the right thing. And, and we've all seen what happens when someone wants to be right. It's, it's okay to be wrong. And I, I don't see this being wrong to help people. Um, man.
Yeah, I, I'm looking at it. I'm, I'm more supportive of the seventy-five. If we're going to do the twenty years at a two and a half percent, I think the seventy-five, twenty-five is, is, is a fair deal. If you want to do a twenty-year note.
What's the difference in the payment between two and a half and three percent on that configuration, please?
So just for reference, we are making four to five percent interest on our money right now. So we are actually losing more than just what you see the difference in what we're paying in these scenarios with these lower interest rates. So, and I'm just speaking from the financial side.
So on this, what's the full debt service? What does this cost us? I mean, the cost of the project plus we're financing this basically ourselves, right? Okay, so what's the full expense?
Well, it's the seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, but we're fronting all the money.
Plus change orders, which are going to happen, so figure in another fifteen percent off that seven hundred?
Potentially, yes.
So full debt service on this is, just call it eight hundred thousand?
Could easily get there.
Okay, so no matter what y'all decide here as far as percentages and everything else, that's still, just call it eight hundred thousand dollars of liquidity that is coming out that we are not gaining our interest on, like Jeff just said. And every year that money is lo- worth less and less. So just assume, no matter what you're doing, eight hundred thousand dollars is coming out of the city coffers and you're just hoping to get it back. Does that make sense? What we're negotiating now is, at what rate can we hope to get it back?
No matter what scenario we go down, there's going to be a cost. There's, there's. So I think when we say whole, we're talking just the actual repair amount of whole.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead.
I, I think that's what, what I was saying about earlier. You can see how, how painful this is for the city. It's not, it's, this is not a, a, it's something we're going to go out and, this is not an investment for us as far as making money. It's trying to help you, help the community and, and so forth. So, uh, hopefully we can come up with, I think we're getting closer, but I think we can come up with something that, that is going to be, uh, favorable here in a couple of minutes.
Here's, here's what I would suggest to, to council and if y'all, you know, we don't take votes in the workshop, but if y'all are all, you know, in agreement to say this to staff, I would like to focus on the seventy-five, eighty and nine, I'm sorry? Seventy-five, eighty and ninety. Uh, I would like it to stay at the two point five, I believe is what it was, two point five at the twenty years. And if, if everyone was okay with it, I think this is the direction I would like to send the s- staff to have prepared for us on the ninth to take action on a seventy-five, eighty and ninety.
Is that for a twenty-year term?
Twenty-year term, and then that's what we'll take action on. We'll, we'll have to pick one of those plans that night. Mr. Goodman?
I've, I've got a couple of questions, uh, kind of for the ordinance and just in general per city staff. What does default look like? Are we charging default fees? Are we charging late fees? What happens if they go into default?
That's up to you guys to decide. I mean, that needs to be part of this conversation.
What happens if they only make partial payments? Are we going to charge default?
I think that one of the things that y'all need to decide is, are we going to treat this like a typical loan like this? And if so, there would be late fees and there would be additional interest based on the.
So with the call today with Mr. Holla, Fabrice, correct me if I'm wrong. So a lot of those things, this is not the typical, um, billing system. So I guess the, the quick answer, there's, that's a no.
So we are not going to be charging default fees?
You're, you're basically, um.
So if someone was to say pay ninety dollars a month? What's that? If, if somebody was to underpay, they wouldn't go into default?
And.
Fabrice, do you need to bring that word?
Probably the safe answer to that is to, uh, verify with Mr. Holla on that. And, uh, we can bring it back at the December ninth council meeting.
Yeah. Mr. Powers?
Uh, if you guys still have my little paper in front of you there, um, if you look at item A, uh, this is, this kind of touches on some of those little ancillary concerns that I had, the little details. Uh, obviously, we're going to have liens on the property A1, right? Everybody understands that there's going to be a lien on the property. Everybody understands that when the property sells, we're going to be made whole immediately in escrow. Uh, the balance paid in full, um, uh, and then number three, uh, this is a, one concern that I have is can a, can a future council, uh, be prevented from forgiving the debt or any portion of it? Can there be, is, 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 can a future council vote to say, I'll forgive the debt?
No. Oh, I, I, I remember in the call today, that was kind of alluded to and that's, I think that was a no.
They can't do that, okay? And then the last one I had was, was goes along with what Don was saying. What steps can or will be taken if a homeowner doesn't make the payments on time? And it's, you know, what, what, what can you do, uh, or would we do?
Well, it just goes back to the statement Don had earlier is, there's a lien on the home? The, the money will get made whole at one point?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I agree with that, yes. But also going back to, this is a business deal. And so I, I, I think with any, with, I know this isn't a contract, but in any business deal, I think we need to be very clear that I think we're doing, um, we're, I mean, we're going out and do, this is, this is something, this is a first for this city and I think we're doing something, uh, that needs to be done, but at the same time with the understanding that there needs to be repercussions for not falling through with the deal. I understand everybody's situation, but we have to have something in place.
You know, that's like Fabrice said, that could be a hollow question to clarify. Though we, we, we spoke about it, but I mean, that's.
Just when we go to vote, I would just like something on here to clearly stated, like what, like the part of the term, I guess, like, there will be a lien, but also, you know.
I just, I, if I were, are you asking Mr. Holla on that? Because I know he's so, just so everyone knows, we, uh, are able to text Mr. Holla and he can give us some answers. He's at another meeting. So Fabrice, what do you have?
So my question to him was, can we implement a late fee? And his answer is, I think the late fee would be connected to the interest if charged. It's not the same as the admin fee we discussed. So I, I'm assuming that's a yes.
Okay, so that does, it does allow a late fee then?
I, can I just make a recommendation?
Sure.
Just lay out what I think. The interest should be enough to protect the city's assets. That's, that to me is the purpose of the interest in this case. If this was a private loan, it'd be making money. The purpose of interest in this case is to protect the city's assets, i.e. the dollars that are being lent. With that being said, if they choose to pay it now or later, they just incur more interest. I personally, I, I think they've got to make some payment. I'm not really concerned about how much they pay. I just care that it's paid within twenty years. Um, if, if it's fifty dollars in a balloon, however we structure this, I don't, it, the city has to be made whole, i.e. the city needs the same purchasing power it has today when this is paid back. And I know we're giving up future value of money of what we could have invested and that is the city doing a service to this community on the finance side. So that's where I personally am. I, I feel like this is a wonderful finance deal. This is really good. Um, I'm not caught up on monthly payments. I, I just want the city made whole. They've, whatever the purchasing power is today, we have that purchasing power when this is done.
Mr. Brewer?
Yeah, uh, I think, I appreciate the mayor saying, well, uh, we can direct staff with the seventy-five, eighty and ninety. But I think for the sake of clarity for the residents, I think if we can at least have a pretty strong consensus of what particular one, for them to come back, go back to their residents and say, this is what we're looking at. Because if we wait till the meeting in December and they don't have a clear idea which one it's going to be, it's hard for them to say, yes or no, we can't do this. They may be able to do all three, but I think just for their, just so they know exactly where, what, what it is that we're looking at, that they can go back to their folks and say, this is it. I think it's important that we have an idea today. I like the seventy-five, honestly. I think that's. What's that? Uh, I could go either way, to be honest on that, but I think two and a half is, is fine.
Two and a half was eighty-one, forty-eight and three was eighty-five, twenty-seven. That's what I have, so it's not that much of a difference. Um.
I think three gets us a little closer to, I think three's a little more fair for the city and for the residents. We're not trying to.
Okay, so I guess, and again, this is just direction. The, the true, the true vote and discussion of that will be December ninth. So if, if, gosh, it's so hard to do because we can't take a vote. All in favor of seventy-five percent? Um, so, all right, here's, that's a good way to do it. De- uh, Dennis, out of the three up there, which one do you like? And, and that had to be just long discussion, just which one out of the three that you like?
Uh, resident seventy-five.
Mr. Towery, which one do you like?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I think that, uh, I think I would say seventy-five at three percent.
Mr. Brewer?
Uh, seventy-five, three percent.
Mr. Dean?
I think twenty years, seventy-five percent, three percent.
Mr. Goodman?
Mine seemed to be a little long-winded.
Well, okay. It's a discussion.
Ninety percent, five year, five percent, twenty years. That's assuming no default penalties.
What's that payment?
One twenty-one, seventy-seven.
And, uh, Mr. Powers, uh, out of the, the options, which one would you like?
Right now, I'm leaning on where I was when I walked in the room, the seventy-five, twenty-five at three percent.
Se- uh, can you give me seventy-five, twenty-five at three percent and was the term twenty or what was the term?
Yeah.
Twenty?
I was, I was looking at ten and fifteen when I came in, so.
Twenty, to go back to Mr. Goodman's point, it gives you the flexibility. So would you, would, would you want it to say fifteen then? Because I'm just trying to get where.
I, 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 the, the term itself, uh, for the reasons Mr. Towery gave earlier, um, I don't think we're looking at people, actually a whole lot of people paying for the, for this over the course of twenty years. I think people that are going to be there for a long time are probably going to knock this thing out as soon as they possibly can. Um, those who can pay it upfront will pay it upfront. Those who need a couple, three years to pay it will do that. But the people that are struggling to stay in their home, they need that low payment now. So I, the, the, I've kind of gone, uh, back on the, whether it's ten, fifteen or twenties are relevant. If the payment is, is helpful to them, we actually, the longer the term, the more interest we make, the, the less of a bite was, were taken. But I, I still, I, I still, I still would like to see on the ninth, and maybe if you guys agree, maybe those two scenarios, what Mr. Goodman's presenting and then what we're talking about, seventy-five, twenty-five.
So staff, here's the direction. The, uh, two plans to submit on December ninth. The first one, it will be seventy-five percent, three percent at twenty. And with whatever staff recommendations and numbers for that one, the second plan that you will submit for December ninth is going to be the ninety percent at five percent with the one twenty-one, seventy-seven payment. So those would be the two plans for December ninth, uh, to discuss and take action on. So however that needs to be worded with Mr. Holla and staff, um, along with the other two items that were pushed for December ninth, that would be the direction I would go with.
Can we get, uh, some more input here? From, uh, Mr. City Manager, do you want to throw your two cents in here on this?
Well, I think staff's recommendation was to, in, in things like this, you always have to find some kind of compromise. And, uh, my recommendation was the seventy-five, uh, out of the, the range.
For the split?
Si- seventy-five, twenty-five.
All right, so we've, we've done the direction now, so we'll go ahead and I'm just going to now do the normal around the room. Any last minute remarks, because we've just gave staff direction. Um, first off, Mr. Milner, do you have anything you want to add from the community side now that you know the two options that you're going to be hearing on the ninth to get voted on?
Well, first of all, let, let me write down the second option you.
Yep, ninety percent, five percent interest rate, one twenty-one, seventy-seven is the payment.
Ooh, that would be tough. Um, I just wanted to thank all of you. I mean, very valuable to us to be able to witness all, all of you working on our, our behalf. The, uh, the residents know, don't know all the things we've done together to try to get this far. And I'm very proud of this council and the efforts you've made to get this within something reachable for us. And I, I will do everything I can to push through whichever option you decide. It'll, and it won't be your fault if it doesn't happen, because I know how some of the people are down there. They're very difficult to persuade, even though they know this is a last option for them. They know that we'll never get a deal like this again. And we'll find a way to work with whatever you decide. But honestly, I'd kind of like the payment to be a little bit lower.
Understood.
But, uh, I appreciate all you've done.
Absolutely. Kevin, Mr. Carson, do you have anything?
I did oh, same. I, I was just thinking about, we moved here in oh-three and I've, I don't know how many councils I've talked to since then and when they were meeting in the old building on two oh-five and it was just a little table. But no, we, we seriously appreciate you even considering this, um, and the work that you guys have put in to, to, uh, support for the community and us, so thank you.
Jen, do you have anything?
I want to say thank you. Um, I understand what we're asking of the city. I understand what you're, a unique situation. You actually opened up some avenues for other people in the future if they're ever in dire straits and that really stands to, to, as a representation of who you are as a council. Um, we as a community have been slandered online by social media posts and a lot of different things and we've stayed silent through the whole thing. We hope that in the future that we're respected a little bit more as, as neighbors and part of the community. That's it.
Mr. Tucker? Chief? Mr. London?
Uh, I just want to say thank you guys for having the patience. I know this has been a very long and, um, I'll even say painful process, because I know that there's been vehicle damage and then Chief, I know there's been apparatus issues and, um, so we're, we're, we're working, we're doing what we can and we're trying to be as efficient as possible. So, we're working, we're doing what we can, and we're trying to be as efficient as possible, but as you can see, we're also trying to be the best stewards of everyone's money. So, we have to take all things into consideration with this, and, you know, I truly appreciate everybody's open and honest discussions and deliberations in our talks about this, and believe me, this is, there's been a lot of other discussions, and we're like, okay, we can't do this here, because we're gonna have a quorum, or we're gonna do this, or we're gonna do that, but individually, we've had some discussions, and we, this is a hot topic for us. So, you know, do know that we are taking all of this into consideration. I personally would like to keep it down at the, you know, at that eighty-one or eighty-two dollar a month level, if it's feasible, if it's not, then we'll probably be a little higher. But, as was stated, we do have to make the city whole with this, so, again, thank you.
Mr. Towery?
Yeah, I think this is something pretty, you know, pretty important to me, I think we've, you know, we've had a lot of conversations. I feel blessed to be a part of this, I mean, you know, I'm not a politician by any means, I'm just somebody that was, you know, born and raised here and wanted to do something to give back and be a part of seeing this. The road's embarrassing, you know, to be a part of the city, but it's awesome to be able to be a part of changes like this that really affect people, so, I'm glad that we had the opportunity to discuss, and, you know, this is something that, I mean, I had, my wife had a client years ago that lived in y'all's neighborhood talking about selling the house, because she was like, we just can't do this road, and so, you know, I mean, this is just something that's been going a long time, so, like I said, I'm just, I'm glad to be here and be a part of this, so, thank you guys.
We're glad you're here. Mr. Brewer?
Yeah, so, for me, and I know I never will forget the day I drove down y'all's road to put a yard sign up, that was an experience. But, for me, it's about, and I've been in the audience before when Mr. Milner would stand up before the council and ask for assistance, and nothing. And there are things that we can try, that if it doesn't work, that doesn't mean we stop trying. And I think the ordinance that was passed gives us an opportunity to try, and, so, it's a, you're the first one, we knew it was gonna take some time, but we'll get there.
Mr. Dean?
Yeah, just appreciate the conversation, I think we are close enough to something, should be able to work, and I think we've got a lot of kind of discussion, a lot of thinking about this between now and the ninth, it's not an easy, easy thing.
Mr. Goodman?
Kind of same thing I said at the opening, the need is obvious, and we are close. We've gotta get this done, and we are so close, so, we've gotta figure this out. There's a clear need, I don't see why we can't get this done.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Powers?
Oh, yeah, just going back to some of the minor details that we talked about compared to the terms, and I noticed that whenever we were stating what those concerns were, you were nodding in approval that you would understand that. So, for me, over the next, between now and the next meeting, I'm gonna be just submitting some of those things to staff, just from my own, my own little list, to have them, and then hopefully, I don't know what this agreement's gonna look like when it's in its written form, there's obviously needs to be a written agreement of some type, right?
It will be a statement of final cost, is what it will be. It's not necessarily an agreement as recommended by city attorney. And at the end of this process, what we'll do is, we'll mail out a statement of final cost along with the ordinance to every individual property owner.
Mr. Powers, that's a legal issue that we'll discuss in the executive session of the ninth, of why that has to be that way.
Okay, that's perfectly fine, and so, I'll just, I'll submit those, and we'll do with them what we will. Sure, no, no problem, no problem.
Fabrice, do you have anything you want to add on any of this?
Just want to add that, so, we are in agreements that we will be including a late fee as part of this, the proposal that you have in front of you.
Yes, sir. Mr. White?
I might would just say, to Councilmember Powers' point, I'm sure you guys will come up with questions over the next couple weeks, try to get those to us sooner rather than later, same thing with any questions for Mr. Holla on the legal aspect of it, so that we're all on the same page and can get this done.
Absolutely. Anza, do you have anything on this?
I got a response to that late fee thing, my interest rate was based, I was not factoring a late fee on that, on my proposal. The interest rate would protect that, that's why, it's the reason it is the way it is.
So, go ahead, so, I'll close it, so, I do want to point out, I know we say stuff on the previous council, I will say that the previous council, there were a few council members that were trying to help find a path to this as well. I know myself, Mr. Tucker's in the audience tonight, he went and visited, I think, at least two or three times. So, there was willingness, it just, it was just not able to come to finding a way, and a lot of that was the path of, we needed an ordinance to be written, and it just, that took the time, so, I do know that the past councils, they did care. And honestly, I hope that they hear your plea on that. It costs absolutely nothing to be kind, it just doesn't cost anything to be nice to people, it doesn't, I mean, to say people are faith-based and Christians, I mean, I just don't know how some people look in the mirror and say that they're okay with the way they do things, but that's not my place to judge, that's another person who keeps better notes than I do. So, I started, I read a book that was given to me by Mark Kipit, and it's called The Mayor, and it talks about the rise of Charleston, and I wanted to point out a few things about that book. It talks about a personal relationship with citizens, and this council does that. This council finds ways to be personable, they show up at everyone's meetings, I think, the last meeting, I think, you had two council members with you, right? So, I mean, they're showing up to be, you know, to find a way to have relationships with citizens, and in the book, he viewed the mayor's role as a very direct form of service, saying you have to have a personal relationship with people. That includes taking the phone call when the garbage doesn't get picked up, I mean, he literally says that, and I, you don't know how many emails I get when people do not get their garbage picked up, quite frankly, majority of them are from Glen Acres. The importance of the public realm, you know, that all citizens own everything together. It doesn't matter if you live in Glen Acres, Chisholm Crossing, Sonoma Verde, Austin Corners, any of the neighborhoods, we are still the citizens of our public realm together, and we should be good neighbors. When the storm happened when I first became mayor, man, Tucker was climbing hills, Easter wore the craziest-looking rain boots and was climbing hills, Paul Day was out there, I mean, that was unity, that was people working together. How the differences caused us to not be friends will be beyond me for the rest of my life, because to me, what happens up here is business. We disagree quite a bit up here, but you know what? We know when the gavel's hit, it's business, and when the gavel's hit again, we're back to friends, and we maintain that. I don't know how that fell apart over differences, it blows my mind. He talks about advancing community harmony, the need to create a community mutual respect with affection, affection. I mean, again, being nice, leading with vision and listening, I think everybody up here listens. If there's anyone who has the most listening ear up here, I would probably say it's Mr. Brewer, and the man, I don't think he speaks as much as I'd like him to, because when he does, it's always wise, I walk away learning something. Lastly, resilience and compassion, seeing the community coming together that was loving and helping each other was Charleston's finest moment, and that was demonstrated after there was a tragedy of a gunshot, where someone was killed by the police. I guess my point is, we can be together, we can work hard together, we can find things to make things happen. We gave direction with two things, I am so blessed to have the council members that I have, to be able to call y'all my friends, to be able to call y'all my comrades up here, and I'm proud of the things y'all do, I really am. So, if no one else has anything before I hit the gavel, it is eight oh six, thank y'all for coming to the workshop.
Petitillon?